Okay, it's officially seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. It's Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. And if we could please have a roll call.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Mayor DeLasso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here. Thank you for that. And in addition to our city council up here, we have our city manager, Damian Obid, our city attorney, John Bakker, our chief of police, Michael Parish. I have to look at every time to make sure the people are here before I shout their names. City engineer, director of public works, Craig Scott. Administrative services director, Angela Quarter. Director of community development, Noah Hausch. And sitting in for our city clerk, Lauren Burgess, is Carrie Pahom. Thank you for being here tonight. And with that, if you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all very much for that. Item four is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolution and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, no fighting. We have a motion to second, and before we take a vote, I would like to make one editorial change under item 18 in the minutes. Number one, there was, it states Mayor DeLasso adjourned to closed session at 9:54 PM. And then you look a little bit later under adjournment, and we adjourned the full meeting at 9:50. Really hard to go back four minutes in time to do what we did. So I conferred with Lauren over texting, and we actually adjourned to closed session at 8:54 PM. So I just want to make that a change, and if the motion and second are okay with that, which they are.
Yes.
Then all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, please show that's a 5-0 vote in favor. Now we're at item five, excuse me, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the community development department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. Take a little time out to drink tea. Voices disappearing. Item C, the Ronan Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatisity.org. The annual holiday food drive sponsored by the City of Kattati and the California Homemakers Association will be taking place on Saturday, December 21st. Food collection is from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM located behind City Hall. The City of Kattati Rancho Adobe Fire District and Rotary International has begun its annual holiday toy drive. Donations of unwrapped gifts can be taken to the Kattati Police Department or the Rancho Adobe Fire Station in Kattati until December 11th. And finally, breakfast with Santa is on Saturday, December 14 at 9:00 AM. Be sure to get your tickets before they sell out. Contact our recreation manager, Ashley Wilson, for additional details at awilson@kattatisity.org, or (707) 665-4222. We are now at item six, which is approval of the final agenda. Do we have any changes?
Thank you, Mayor, no changes.
No changes, very good. And now we go to item seven, which is citizens business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And we have one speaker card. Mr. Barich, please.
Good evening, Mayor. The speaker card that I gave you tonight clearly was filled out with my official title, Councilman Barich. Now you continue to refuse to refer to me as Councilman Barich, although so many other people in this town refer to me as Councilman Barich. People at the Rancho Adobe Fire District and the board members refer to me as Councilman Barich, or former Councilman Barich. But in the very room that I earned my title, you continue to refuse to refer to me as Councilman Barich. It's very frustrating, but the fact is, I want the citizens to know tonight that my name is George Barich. That's the name on my birth certificate, but the title I earned is Councilman Barich. And according to proper etiquette, that you should have been studied up by now, you should know that. And I want the public to know tonight that I'm not only the only former city councilman here tonight in the room, but I'm also the only citizen who bothered to attend tonight this meeting. And I think it's clear to me that's because this community has a complete lack of faith in this body of government to lead and lead responsibly. The very sad testament. Now, the last, last month when I came before the city council, I asked for the second time if I could please find out from the council what the council spent $71,000 on regarding a new purchase of a police vehicle. Now here's your staff report from October 22nd, and nowhere in this staff report does it say what you purchased. I've asked nicely if you could just share with me the purchase order to see what we spent $71,000 on. I got a bunch of malarkey from Mr. Landman about some 1978 Volkswagen. The whole issue of my question went completely over his head with his resentment and hatred for responsible leadership. So I'd like to be asked, I'd like to ask again. The last meeting I attended, Ms. Skilman was serving as vice mayor in your seat, sir, and I asked her at the end of my presentation, can I please find out what we spent the $71,000 on? She said absolutely. Now what part of absolutely did you mean, madam? Absolutely in my lifetime? Absolutely not? What kind of legal mumbo jumbo spin are you trying to put on these meetings disgracing this body? Am I deserving of an answer to what we spent $71,000 on? Am I going to continue to get this chuck and jive from a very simple question from a taxpayer, a former city leader in good standing with the town? Can I get a straight answer? Are you people so jealous, so vindictive because I was elected to the city council while these three men were appointed? Now I'm sorry if you're jealous, but you need to grow up, and you need to answer my question. Can I do that? Can you folks do that?
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra time, Mayor. I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. Seeing there's no one else, did you have anything, Mr. Barich, for consent?
No, sir.
No. All right, seeing that I will close the citizens business section of the meeting, and we will move on to consent calendar, where we have items A, B, C, and D.
Move to approve.
I'll second those.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Please show a 5-0 vote in favor of approving the entire consent calendar. And I just lost my page.
Nine.
Yeah, nine is good, but when you don't have it in front of you. Here it is. Sorry about that. Direction on future agenda items, how about that? I actually have an item, but does anybody else have any, anything to bring up?
Not this evening.
So I would like to see if the council would be interested. As you know, Mayor Sam Liccardo in San Jose had sent out an inquiry to a number of electeds. I did sign on because it was in between our meetings, and in essence, I'm kind of not giving it a fair shake, but it was to look at the possibility of changing how PG&E operates in a very broad nutshell. Whether it's a private entity, which we don't think it's ever going to go to that, nor should it. So I agreed that we should look into that and have a discussion with the PUC. Now, a staff person from the City of San Jose has sent an email that I shared with the city manager, and it's a draft resolution to kind of push this forward just a little bit further. So my question is, under a future agenda item, would we be interested in at least looking at that resolution, having a discussion, getting public feedback, and making a decision whether we want to or don't want to sign on to the resolution?
I think it'd be appropriate to bring back this agenda item.
So you two seem okay with it? Yes, councilmember, you have questions?
I'd like to suggest, I think there's nothing wrong with supporting this in concept. Had I been here last, and as you can tell, I'm not all the way back, but had I been here last week, my report would have talked about how we're looking at some of the things at Sonoma Clean Power for the two counties that we serve, including Sonoma County. But I'd like to suggest if we bring it back rather than sign on strictly, completely behind that, I'd, at this point, I'd say we just support in concept, much as we already have, and wait and see. I think this becomes real at the point they bring some sort of funding package together to the bankruptcy court. And I believe, my best read on this, there's some efforts to make that happen. But until that really happens, my personal take would be I prefer just to support the concept, and I think we can do that. If you look at the principles they put forward, support the general principles, they're all good ones. They speak to better service, more open books, newable benefits that would be good for the public. But that's the only caveat I'd have, if we were to bring it back, I wouldn't want to sign completely on to that until they get to that point. Imagine that's a month or so by the time it came before us, it might actually time out perfectly.
Yeah, I'm figuring, you know, this is our only meeting in December. The absolute earliest we would see it is the second week of January, but it could even be that fourth week. So I just wanted to see if there was interest in at least looking at it. I mean, it is conceptual, but just taking it a step forward. So, all right, so we have a motion. City manager and I will follow up on that. Great, thank you all very much. And now we're at item 10, which is our regular agenda. And the first item is adoption of resolutions supporting the nomination of the Gravenstein Corridor Zoning District as a priority development area, and the commercial industrial and general industrial zoning districts as a priority production area. And I will turn that over to Mr. Hausch.
Thank you, Mayor DeLasso, members of the council. Just wait briefly, I have just a quick PowerPoint, but as was identified, the items before the council are consideration and adoption of two resolutions to support the nomination of the Gravenstein Corridor Zoning District as a priority development area, and the commercial, industrial, and general industrial zoning districts as a priority production area, which is a new designation under ABAG MTC. And seems there we are. So moving on to the introduction slide, just as I just mentioned in the mayor introduced, there's two resolutions to support these nominations, and if they are approved by the council, they'll be submitted to ABAG MTC to support their nomination of a new PDA for Kattati and a new PPA, which you'll get into. So just briefly, what are, as a PDA, and most folks in Kattati and Sonoma County are familiar with what priority development areas are. They're areas within communities that the community has shown a local commitment to develop housing amenities and services to support the day-to-day needs of the residents, focusing on pedestrian-friendly and transit-rich environments. The priority production area, or a PPA, is a new designation proposed by ABAG MTC, and it's intended to support local job creation and economic development in areas that are zoned for industrial use, so specifically only industrial uses, and are also within a half mile of regional transit. And it also can't overlap with an existing or a proposed priority development area or PDA. And this is just a pilot program, and I'll get into that a little bit more with the next slide. So just briefly to show the areas we're talking about, the resolutions identify Gravenstein Corridor, so the area is zoned as commercial, or I'm sorry, Gravenstein Corridor Commercial District highlighted here. And the next slide shows the areas zoned for commercial, industrial, and general industrial combined as the Kattati Business Park Priority Production Area. Those are the two areas highlighted with the resolutions proposed to be nominated under these titles to ABAG MTC. So we'll go to the next slide. Just to get a little bit of the background, born from a 2006 effort called Focus Our Vision, led by ABAG, which sought to focus growth and conserve open space and protect quality life and ecological diversity, in 2008, or I'm sorry, the PDA, Priority Development Areas, was, the framework for those was created. In 2008, City of Kattati adopted a resolution to create the downtown PDA, which also includes actually the Santero Way specific plan area, so it's often seen as two separate PDAs, but when it was adopted, it was done as one, supporting those two regions. And ABAG ultimately approved that as the downtown and Kattati Depot Priority Development Area. That's what we have today. Since this, the state legislation, and there's a lot of background in the report, I'm going to paraphrase, the state legislature and local efforts have sought to address climate change and focused development on directing, or focused grant funding towards projects that are within these areas. And so in 2012, MTC prioritized the direction of transportation funds towards jurisdictions that had planned for housing and focused their growth in PDAs. 2013, as an example of how that worked, SETA directed 92% of their OBAG grant funds to PDAs. So it's obvious that the funding sources have kind of consolidated into areas and communities that have adopted priority development areas. And then, and in that round, Kattati received $250,000 towards some of our infrastructure work, and that was for the Old Redwood Highway South Preservation Project. And it's worth noting, in the latest round, Kattati was awarded $675,000, and that helped fund the East Kattati Avenue Street Rehabilitation Project also as a part of our PDA. And so kind of continuing on those efforts, MTC and ABAG in 2018 kicked off the Plan Bay Area 2050, which is the next step in the regional planning efforts. And as a part of this, they are asking communities to provide letters of support for new PDAs, but also in discussing kind of the intent of the PPAs or Priority Production Areas, they received a little bit of criticism in that all their efforts were focused primarily on housing and preservation of open space, and so they decided to pivot and also focus on kind of some economic development efforts and prioritization of job support, supporting job creation. And so out of that came this pilot program for the Priority Production Areas, or PPAs. And the intent of these is to identify in the future some funding opportunities or technical assistance to support enhanced planning and infrastructure opportunities for properties that are designated under this PPA, with the goal to expand the current contributions of those local properties and the businesses that operate from them for the local and regional economy. So it's basically the other leg, they previously supported housing and open space, now looking to do some economic development work. As a part of that, we have to designate some land within the city as a PPA if we're going to try to chase some of that grant money as it becomes available. And so staff is recommending that the council adopt that type, that resolution, which would allow us to formalize that application. As identified, it's private, I mean, it's a pilot program, so it's new. How well it shakes out, we don't really have a lot of answers to, but we do think it's worth filing that request to nominate those areas. There are no, or minimal impacts to the budget currently, just the staff time it took to file the application and bring the item before the council. The project is specifically exempt from CEQA, and it's worth noting that, again, acceptance of either the new PDA or the PPA is not guaranteed, but we're going to try, try for it. So with that, it's recommended that the city council adopt two resolutions, and it's identified in the next slide, to nominate the Gravenstein Corridor Zoning District as a priority development area, so a new PDA for the west side of town, and then also the commercial, industrial, and general industrial zoning districts as a priority production area, as identified in the staff report. And the next slide is just the slide for questions.
All right, very good. Thank you for that report. Any questions for staff at this point? I'll start with Councilmember Harvey.
I think most of us are familiar with the terminology of pedestrian-friendly. It's, you know, something that we've used for many years. Can you elaborate a little bit on what it means to be a transit-rich environment? That terminology is, seems to be a little bit newer.
Sure. So it's generally locations that have regional transportation, public transit, with certain, what they call headways, or basically occurrences. So how often do the regional transportation systems, so either SMART or the bus system, show up at the bus stops or the SMART station? And it has to be a half an hour or less, the headways, for that to count as transit-rich. The current Gravenstein Highway stops may not qualify, but there's kind of some flux that SETA is looking at with regards to improving their service, and so we're putting our hat in the ring with that area. That's kind of the reason why it may not be supported by ABAG and MTC, but we think it's a good effort, given the ability to get some additional grant funds.
And is it possible that with some of the development going out there, that there might be transit stops added out there in the future as development occurs? Right now, it's dirt, so I get why they wouldn't want to have a bus stop where there's just dirt.
So absolutely, generally, you know, transit stops are intended to provide help for people. So if there's more people living there, then they could choose to increase frequency. And it is worth noting that one of the most recently approved projects on the north side of Gravenstein Highway does include the construction of a new bus stop at that location in front of the assisted living facility.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you both. Councilmember Moore?
My question was kind of on the same. I'm assuming, well, you referenced a half an hour, but I think you meant a half mile from.
Well, it has, the bus stop has to be within a half mile of these areas, and the headway on the bus has to be every half hour. So it's both.
And so we're looking at the ones over on Old Red by Walgreens and that area there?
On the, on the west side of the highway, though. So there are some bus stops over there, and the parking ride, but the question of if we meet the headway, it's not 100% clear, but we, we're choosing to apply in the hopes that we can work with SETA to convince ABAG to accept it.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question. I know there was some talk from MTC ABAG about potentially looking at refurbishing slightly the PDA requirements after last year's CASA effort. And I was curious, are we aware of any caveats tied potentially to this, or any seen-on-horizons requirements that would come along with this ability? Because that's often the case, if you're open for money and agree to various stipulations. We saw there were some potential changes through legislation in CASA potentially for areas that are served by transit. And I just wanted to ask if you've heard of anything like that? That's the only thing about this that gives me any pause. Is there, and it's probably a question for Mr. Bakker, too. If there's nothing involved with this right now, then subsequently it would probably be harder to change that, but that's what I wonder if I could get you to opine a little on.
So that's an excellent point. ABAG MTC did reevaluate, and I believe issued new criteria for what qualifies as a PDA. The areas that are currently designated, we were allowed to internally review those and work with them, didn't involve a new nomination, and we believe that our current PDA is going to stick under those new criteria. I'm not aware of any efforts to make some of the mandates that were associated with some of the CASA considerations tied to PDAs, but the point of PDAs being reevaluated is a good one, and that is accurate. They are currently being reevaluated by MTC and ABAG.
Okay, I just wanted to see if anything was being floated along. Obviously, anything can happen legislatively, we know that.
Yeah, I have not heard of any legislative efforts focused on PDAs or PPAs as it stands, but as you know, there has been a lot of creative legislation coming out of, particularly Bay Area legislators, some of which has been focused on MTC, Plan Bay Area stuff. So one never knows, but so far, they've defined on a statewide basis transit-oriented areas more broadly rather than focusing on PDAs or PPAs.
Good, thank you both. That's helpful.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman? Any questions?
No, thank you. Now it sounds like I need one.
All right, I have no questions. I'll just have some comments afterwards, but I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Mr. Barich, no? Public comment on, it's very complicated, you just walked in on this, probably not, I know, but I'm just going to throw it out there. We're talking about the possible adoption of resolutions supporting the nomination of the Gravenstein Corridor Zoning District as a priority development area, and the commercial slash industrial and general industrial zoning districts as a priority production area. Did you have any comments there in the back? No? Okay. All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment. You know, to me, there certainly doesn't seem to be any harm in the application process, and especially in this case where we have been successful with a previous PDA in getting funding for projects here in Kattati. So why not leverage whatever money we may have in our budget, which is not a huge budget, but leverage it from any outside sources? And, you know, there's a lot, what was it, some 96, 98% of the money was allocated by money was allocated by A-BAG and MTC, went to PDAs? Wow. It'll probably be a little bit less, maybe because the PPAs is something newer, so, but that's okay, you know, they're still going to allocate that large of a percentage of money to those two zoning areas. I mean, why not, right? So, any further questions or comments from council? Please.
You know, I, I just concur with you. My thoughts were similar to that. You know, I don't see a whole lot of downsides in this. You know, putting it in and trying to qualify, you know, may, and it's a big may, may have benefits to us. So there was no, nothing in here that I saw as a, as a downside to at least trying to bring possible new funding sources to the community.
You know, the one thing, too, I want to add, though, about the, I, I called it the frequency of stops on the corridor. You know, there are fewer, there are less frequent stops because the development hasn't occurred there. You know, is that something that MTC and A-BAG would take into consideration? And knowing that there's development coming, we already have proposals, one or two that are already approved by council, you know, wouldn't that make, I, I would assume it would make a little bit better argument in getting these called, that? I don't know if you've heard anything about that?
Well, we've talked to SCTA about that, and are trying to leverage their help in getting some additional support from A-BAG and MTC.
Okay, well, we'll see how that goes. Any further questions from this side?
No questions, just a quick comment. I'd like to congratulate staff for being on top and looking into something new and just emerging like this, to benefit the city, that impresses me, and I agree with the general tenor of the comments here tonight.
All right, very good. So with that, I would look for a motion from someone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move a first motion tonight, that we adopt a resolution supporting the nomination of the Gravenstein Corridor Zoning District, zoning district as a priority development area.
And a second?
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Please show a five oh vote in favor of that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. House. And we'll now go to the second item, item B.
There's two, there's two.
Oh, there are two resolutions?
Yeah, we got to do two.
I'll do the second, sorry. Okay. So I'd also move that we adopt a resolution supporting the nomination of the Commercial, Industrial, and General Industrial Zoning Districts as a priority production area.
And I'd be happy to second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Knowing that there's not a third resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Please show five oh for both resolutions. Thank you again. All right, item B on the regular agenda is a word of the construction management contract for the bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding project. I assume that'll be Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, the city obtained a Transportation Development Act grant in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. The grant is to be used to design and construct bike and pedestrian wayfinding signage. The city hired a consultant to conduct a series of public workshops and design the wayfinding signage. The signage is on the board there and has been in the hallways of City Hall for many months now. And reflects much public input from, from several public workshops. The design is complete now, and includes the different types of signage and information kiosks, and a map of where each sign is located. The next step is to prepare bid documents, solicit bids, and use available budget this year to install the signage. There are not, there are not sufficient funds budgeted to install all the signs in the kiosks. There's thirty thousand dollars of the grant money left, which must be spent before June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. So it's a pretty tight schedule. And a hundred and two thousand dollars of general fund for a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. The installation of all the signs and kiosks are estimated to be two hundred and thirty-two thousand. The approach is to, so our approach is to install as many of the signs as the budget allows, and put off the kiosks for a second phase, to happen at a later date. The signage coming in all at one time would be looked at in clusters so that there's continuity, and the signage leads, leads to its destination point, so there's no gaps and so forth. It would be a, functioning units of the program would be installed. The, the contract you're considering tonight with Mo Engineering is for thirty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, and includes preparing the bid package, soliciting bids, and construction management inspection. So we, the, the design is largely done, however, it's not in a state where we can just put it out there for contractors to bid on it. It, it just has a few more technical details left, fabricating details, some, some structures, structural, on how deep to put some of the more elaborate signs into the ground, and what, what that looks like. And then, of course, we're looking to have the consultant provide construction management inspection. So during, during the construction, when the submittal sign it, signs are being fabricated, and, and the contractor then comes back with, hey, is this what you want, before we have the go-ahead to fabricate the signs? This consultant will be reviewing those submittals to make sure that that matches up with our design. The effort is expected to include continued assistance from Public Works field staff for the exact locations of each of the signs. They were involved in the design, earlier design, just to make sure that those, the locations are feasible. When it comes down to actually, this is exactly where we're going to put it, we're going to, we're envision bringing them in again for that portion of it. Okay, the plan is to advertise in February and construct in April through, starting in April, and then we've got till June thirtieth to actually spend the money. Or, and there's, like I said, there's, there's just about thirty thousand dollars left of the, the grant money that we'd have to spend by June thirtieth. With that, so, so what's, what we're considering here is to, by motion, approve a professional service agreement with Mo Engineering to provide those services. I'd be happy to respond. Any questions, ma'am?
All right, very good. Actually, I do have a quick one. For regarding the construction management that we're hopefully going to approve here shortly, is that construction management for the total project? Because we're not, we don't have enough funding to do every phase right now, all at once. And that's what you were saying earlier, as far as, you know, literally doing all the, all the install and, and the, the design work is obviously done with fabrication and install. So is the construction management for what we're taking on now, or is it for, like, the entire project, which we'll fund maybe in two or three phases?
It, it's for just what we're considering now, through the end of June.
Okay, that's what I wasn't clear on. Thank you. Any questions down this direction for staff? Seeing none, how about this way? Councilmember Harvey?
Can you help refresh my memory, the, the placement of the signs? Are those all going to be on public property?
Yes, will be in, on public right-of-way, correct.
On public right-of-way? Okay. All right, so there's nothing that we need to do from a property perspective for placement?
Correct. So we've, we've got a number of parks, you know, they'll be located in Cattati Park, the Plaza Park, and then the Laguna right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Public right-of-way.
All right. And Councilmember Moore, any questions? No? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. If anybody has any comments or questions, and seeing none, go ahead and close, and bring this back to council for action.
I'd move we approve a professional services agreement with Mo Engineering for bid assistance, construction, and inspection services for the wayfinding bike and pedestrian program, and also authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
Second?
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Please show a five oh vote in favor. And we will now move to item C, which is design agreement for the two thousand and twenty, no, I shouldn't say it that way, two thousand and twenty slash two thousand and twenty-one, street construction and improvements project. Mr. Scott?
Members of the council, yes, thank you. This item is to consider approval of a professional service agreement to design the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one street construction improvements project, where this would be the, the third year in a row we're making a very substantial effort into preserving our streets and renewing them. The, just for, for background, in October twenty-two of this year, the council approved a five-year pavement preservation program, and this is year one of that program, which, and, and, well, and then, so, in, in August of twenty, August twenty-first, staff looking towards, you know, doing consultant selection, issued an RFQ, which is a request for proposals from consultants, and from the proposals submitted, we made a selection and have been in negotiation with the, what we believe is the most highly qualified consultant to perform the design services. And we're looking to, which is pretty typical in our budgets, each budget year includes the design, actually, okay, let me back up, the construction for the current year's project and the design for the next year's project. So we're constantly leapfrogging our efforts here, and it might seem like we're early in the process here, we're just in time in December to get a consultant under contract, and then they can work away in January, February, March, and, and get a contractor under contract for the July, August summer construction. So we're, we're just, just right on schedule now with the item tonight. A little flip to the next slide there. So this just gives a little bit of frames up where we are in, in our efforts. I just want to look at the chart to the right, the table to the right, where you'll see the two thousand and twenty and the PCI of sixty-four. We did manage to get our PCI from, over the years, from fifty-three up to sixty-one this year with this past summer's project. So we are on track to hit that sixty-four with the completion of this project that we're talking about for this, this two thousand and twenty summer. And then hopefully, we'll just continue to work our way down that chart as the years go by. This is the project that was in the first year of our present adopted preservation program. It's the hub streets and West Sierra Avenue. The red is the more substantial pavement treatments, it's full-depth reclamation, and the blue is the milling and overlay. So all of those treatments are pretty substantive and yield streets that look like what we just completed in the L section, where they're pretty much brand-new streets. Okay, so budget-wise, we have good news. We, we do not need to pull any more money from an appropriated general fund. We have the hundred thousand dollars that was in our current budget envisioned for just this, for, for designing the two thousand and twenty project. There was a hundred thousand plus, the asterisks mean, we, each one of those is like a hundred and two, a hundred and three, a hundred and five thousand dollars, but we're just, for conservative purposes, we, we comfortably have a hundred in each of those areas. So the second one is the, what was remaining from the two thousand and nineteen construction contract. We had a little bit of contingency, and we actually had a savings of eight thousand dollars from that construction project. So we, we maintained the entire contingency and achieved a savings. And then the East Cattati Avenue project, which had the OBag two funding, that was mentioned prior, earlier, we have a remaining budget on that project as well. So all of those together bring us, combined to our three hundred thousand dollars that we need for this. So it's, it's all working out very nicely budget-wise. That brings me to the conclusion of the presentation, and that, what's up there now is the recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions? Yeah?
Very appropriate photograph to put in your presentation, too. I like that. I have an odd question on timing of paving projects. Every paving project, at least in the United States, happens in July and August. Okay, that's a known fact, it seems like. It's always, there's this time of year, there's a window, I kind of get it. Is there ever an opportunity where the design work, if we, you know, contract out design work to be done fall-winter, which is kind of what you guys are doing here, but even a little earlier, and, and to get, like, I don't know if it's a quicker jump, and, and would it, the reason I'm even asking that is, there seems, to me, it seems like there'd be less competition, therefore, a smaller fee being charged by a paving company. I don't know if that's true or not, but it just, it, it's always, we always see, not just us, but it just, it's always going on. You know, that, that paving project's always going on in a couple of months in the year. Have you guys looked into that at all?
I, I do have an interesting insight into that. That is the prevalent opinion, is to get a jump on the contractor, so when they, when they're the hungriest at the beginning of the season, you, you know, the thought is, you're going to get the most competitive rates. The last two years, we flipped that on its head, we've been late to the game, and so they've wrapped up all their projects, and they're hungry again.
Okay.
For work. So we've gotten very good competitive prices the last two years.
Going later into the season, if you will?
Which was just kind of happenstance, because we were trying to do, like, what everybody else was doing, we just kind of went behind a little bit, and it worked to our favor.
That's great. Keep it up. That's all I can say. Keep it up. Great. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Lehman?
Glad to hear that the construction industry has such a big appetite. It turns out that works out good for us. I want to ask you, on the first page of this agenda item, under analysis discussion, you mentioned traffic calming measures will be added that are intended to address some resident concerns on West Sierra, Charles Street, and William Street. I wonder if you could just briefly speak to a few of those?
So there's, these are primarily pavement preservation projects, that's, that's the main goal. But while we're there, it is possible to, and there's the opportunity, with striping, fairly inexpensive methods, to narrow the lanes and put up signage to slow traffic down. And then, and so, so there are more involved methods of actually having bullabouts, where you bring out the, the curb returns out into the roadways, and that's not what we're considering here. We, we just don't have the budget for those which are more expensive. So these are primarily signage and striping improvements to slow traffic down, and, and the, enhancing the crosswalks.
So no consideration to bumps or anything like that at this point?
No.
No, okay. I know that particularly for Charles Street, traffic calming had been an area of concern. So if this is helpful, that'll be great. And if it doesn't quite do the job, then we revisit it next time around. But that's, I'm glad to see us moving in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was also just going to add, too, separately but related to this, is staff is working on a new stop intersection there at School Street and West Sierra, because what we've seen is people coming from unincorporated county, coming into Cattati on West Sierra at high speeds. And so, the combination of that should help address some of that high-speed issue from coming into the city, but also help address some of the visibility issues people have on School Street, when they're looking to the, to the left, towards the hub, because of the bridge abutment. As well as what Craig said, in terms of striping and signage to try to visually narrow the lanes, so it makes people feel like...
I think that would be very beneficial for most of the people who live over on that side of town and drive it regularly, to know that that is somewhat of a gamble, let's put it that way. There's, there's a little problems with that, and I think that'll be really helpful. So that's good to hear as well. Thank you for, and glad to see that all the years, you know, the public's been talking, and we've been saying things, you guys have this all down, and you're getting to it bit by bit. That's good to see. Thank you.
All right, thank you there very much. Vice Mayor Skelman, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Questions this way? Questions this way? You know, I, I wish I was a teacher and I had you as a student, because you're always so shy and raising your hand like that, it's just, it's very nice, but, well, you could, it'll get my attention. Right. Councilmember Harvey, please, questions?
Um, so the stop signs right here, right in front of City Hall, they, um, appear to be, to some folks, just a suggestion, um, and, um, I know that they, "stop" means "stop." I was curious as to what kind of plans, um, if any, changes we have to kind of make that evident, that that is a stop sign and stop signs mean that you are supposed to stop. Um, I know that we have, um, a lot more folks using those crosswalks, um, especially considering the fact that we have a lot more visitors over, um, at Floodie Ranch. There is a lot more folks that are, um, going over there with children that are, you know, attempting to, um, utilize those, uh, crosswalk areas, and not everyone stops for those stop signs, nor do they yield to pedestrians.
I'd be happy to ditto that, yes. As always, I think, I, I'm not going to speak for all of us, but I bet I could, we'd certainly be happy, I'm assuming we're doing the most enforcement possible, but we'd always be happy to ask for and see more. I think there's numerous places, Veranda there, there's a lot of places that seem to be problems, and I know we all walk them, we live in this town, we walk these areas and we see it constantly, so, and it's a good point, I see a lot more foot traffic right by City Hall now with the success of the ranch, the farm, rather, excuse me.
Yes, Councilmember Harvey, he, with the blacktop and the, a use of thermoplastic paint, which is, lasts a lot longer than what's out there now, which is just regular paint, and that, that needs to be refreshed at least every year. It'll, the, the stop bars and, um, the, the lane, the fog lines and the, the lane delineations will be a lot clearer. It, it is something we can consider, too, to put a, a red beacon at those stop signs, however there are residences right there, and, and so we would have to maybe look at ways of having it focused at the drivers and not really have that light flash.
You wouldn't want that flashing into your bedroom.
Right, so...
Because they flash 24/7. Yeah, I know we can't put like the, the, it doesn't make sense to put the flashing walkway, we typically use those, um, you know, for areas where there isn't, um, stop. There's an assumption that if there's a stop sign there, that people are going to stop, but, you know, we don't see that happen. I mean, the, the only other thing, um, that I, that I have seen in other places, that certainly we haven't considered it, but I have seen, um, it is, uh, where they have flags that, that people utilize as they cross streets. That seems to get people's, um, attention. They do that, uh, in a lot of areas where there's a lot of pedestrians, and it, it just seems to get the, you know, the attention of folks. For instance, uh, when I've seen, um, traveling up in the Sun Valley area, they have them on every single corner, and you just, you know, take the flag and, you know, you have it in your hand, and then when you get to the other side, you, you just place it, and it, it seems to get people's attention. So, um, it's just something to consider that has worked in other areas.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Moore, any questions?
No, along the same lines as Councilmember Harvey, um, I think that corner on West Sierra and School Street, East School Street, is woefully underlit. Um, and I've said this for years, I think we need some sort of a light fixture there on that corner. So I don't know if that would be something that we could consider in that, because that would really help, because it would light up that corner as well, and maybe allow for, um, greater visibility in inclement weather.
Very good, and I know it's been brought up, um, to me, and I've met with a, a number of neighbors as a group over on, um, Cypress and West Sierra. There's a crosswalk there, a painted crosswalk, which I've always called crosswalks a false sense of security, because they're great for a pedestrian, but if the cars aren't stopping, it really doesn't do a lot of good, and we're hearing this over and over again. And there's a, um, at least a group of parents I met with, they have a number of small children who are frequently, if they're not coming to Veranda Falletti Ranch, they're just coming over here to cater, to play on the grass and do whatever, so, um, and I know I've, I've talked to the city manager about this, but that's just another area, a, again, you know, there, there's a lot of things, we've talked about a lot of different things that can be used. To me, you know, the, um, the flashing crosswalks, I don't think are as great as they were when they first came out. I remember when they first came out in downtown Petaluma, you know, it seemed to grab your attention, but boy, I'll tell you, those diamond signs that flash are really up at that eye level of a driver as opposed to being down on the ground, and I think those are probably the most effective as far as electronic-type signage. But, um, so again, yeah, I don't know with, with all this work going on, if that area is even included in any of this, but just to throw that out there. All right, um, that's what we have for questions, let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Barich.
Thank you, sir. I think Mrs. Harvey's comments are spot-on, but I'm going to tell the council and staff I don't appreciate, uh, the chuckles that she got when she had the courage to bring this up, and Mr. Moore should be commended as well. This is a serious issue, and the city has been kicking this can down the road about these failures to stop for years. Eric Kirchman has come forward, Gray Carricker, a number of citizens have come forward. This is an enforcement issue. People know how to stop their cars. They're making fools out of this city, and they're making a fool out of our police department. There's a lot of other things you can do. I appreciate the ideas tonight, but let's take, take a look at some other ones, as I've suggested in the past. You can stripe the street. Striping the street is cheap. You come down the street, stop ahead, or "stop" means "stop." I mean, that's cheap. Paint's cheap. Uh, you could put, uh, a camera out there and start using video technology to enforce the law. You could put a camera on the side of the building that could be Wi-Fi'd into your system to the police station, you guys could be sending out tickets. I think you need a workshop here, because Mrs. Harvey's right, someone's going to get killed, and we're all going to look pretty stupid. Now, on another note, I want to speak to what Mr. Scott said about his CIP plan that we've talked to death. Yes, we have a schedule, and yes, we are on track, but here's what I'm concerned about. If we keep hiring pavement, uh, s- street contractors to install faulty pavement and shoddy workmanship that either they have to come back and redo, or the city has to come back and pay a second time, then this is going to screw up our CIP very quickly. Mr. Scott will be the first one to say, "Hey, it's a plan. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, a plan to go forward, but if anything comes up, we can change it and we can address emergencies throughout the town." Well, I think that shoots the hell out of the plan, basically. I don't like the plan. I think it's a lot of window dressing for the town, that we can say to the town, "Look at, you know, uh, we can't do your street, you know, we can't play favorites, we have to stay on this plan," but the plan's kind of a joke. And I resent the fact that we have to pay these contractors a second time to come back the year after to do it over again, when I'd rather see the, the, the cost savings that Mr. Scott's talking about given to the city attorney's office and have him enforce these contracts. And that's, that's the way to look at it, and send a message to these contractors in, in, in the county, we are no longer going to be putting up with this shoddy workmanship and being taken advantage of, and these low-ball bids, knowing full well that Catati is going to, is going to pay double in the end, because I think that's what our reputation is as a layperson.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on this topic? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. I don't disagree with, you know, half those comments, I think they're right. I think, uh, this past paving season, we'll call it, Argonaut, who did the bulk of the work or all of the work? Do they do the, all of the work? All of it, yeah. I did not get complaints from people I often get complaints from, and with one exception of somebody who was upset that they were still striping in their neighborhood and it was 10 minutes after 6:00 PM and the contract said to only go to 6:00 PM. That was literally the only complaint I heard, and I was like, "Hey, great." But they, they, i- in this case, Argonaut communicated really well with, with the neighborhoods, they did what looks to be, I mean, a fantastic job in all of the areas I've gone to, so, um, it is a matter of contractors, I mean, there's good and bad. Um, we also tried a different technique, it failed, admit it, let's move on, get it fixed. So, um, a- and sticking with, having a plan and sticking with a plan is important, but you also have to have that flexibility. If there's, if one of the streets on the west side all of a sudden has, you know, this major pothole, we, clearly, we have to go out and fix that, and if that takes money away from the plan and there's another side street that doesn't get completed, so, I mean, there is flexibility built into these plans, there has to be. Okay, so with that, is there any, um, any additional comments from anyone? Councilmember Moore, oh, sorry, I'll work my way down. Councilmember Moore, no, Councilmember Harvey? Watch this, Vice Mayor Skilman?
Um, I was just going to concur as well, because that whole Section L that was done looks amazing, having driven on it, it's, it's, so the idea of bringing up a lot of more streets to that level is a great, great future pro- uh, prospect, so, thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Lehman?
Yeah, just something I want to confirm with staff, because I have a different frame in my mind of what's been going on the last few years. So I know, as you, as the mayor mentioned, for that one small section of northern part of downtown where we tried a new package that worked in many other cities, and spectacular, did not work for us. Other than that, in three, four years of major street programs, I'm unaware if we've had any significant program, problems where we had to bring companies back at our cost. Has, has this been going on and I am unaware, or is that incorrect?
It was just limited to that one year.
That, that's what I thought.
Alternative treatment, and it was a subcontractor that did the work and not Argonaut.
Right, a- and that's good to hear, because I remember the first year we embarked in this, like, anytime a big construction project starts, you wait for the complaints, because it is an imposition on a neighborhood, and I was really pleasantly amazed both then and ever since then, most of the people in the neighborhoods were appreciative. Uh, it, that tells me that number one, they're happy to see the work done, and number two, that the contractors are doing a good job of it, um, and knowing that they're not coming back out, just confirming that they're not coming back out to do it again is good to know, so thank you for that.
All right, um, so we're bringing it back to council after public comment and looking for an action.
I would happily make a, a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional service agreement for the 2020, 2021 street construction improvement project.
I'd second that.
All right, motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Please show a 5-0 vote in favor. And now we're at item 10D under the regular agenda, which is reorganization of city council for calendar year 2020, and I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council, so it's Christmas time, which means it's that time of the year when, uh, we have the mayoral and vice mayor rotations, and so, uh, it's, just in the staff report is a table of, um, the last five years of mayors and vice mayors, just as a, for information, um, and I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any on it, otherwise it's pretty straightforward, I think.
All right, thank you for that brevity in that staff report.
I, I will, I will just add that, um, just to remind everyone that, that the current mayor would run through December 31st, the new mayor will take over January 1st.
Thank you for that, as well. All right.
Happy about that?
Not a problem, not a problem, since I missed the, uh, tree lighting, that's great. Um, any questions on this? Can't imagine. All right, I'll open this up for public comment. Any comment?
What item are you on, sir?
We are on item 10D, which is the reorganization city council?
Uh, yes.
Okay, please.
Are you making nominations tonight for the reorganization?
Correct.
Uh, should I wait until those nominations come up before I speak?
No, I, if you have input on that, now's the time.
Well, uh, I'm going to assume the council's going to reorganize to have Ms. Skilman, uh, serve as mayor for next year. If my assumption is correct, I would like to, um, oppose that move, because I don't think Ms. Skilman has, uh, has been credible and has earned the right to be mayor a second time. I found her to be dishonest, and in particular, she lied in a declaration in my federal case against the city of Catati, where she said, "I hovered over Mr. Neil Hancock, who sat in the middle of the room while I was leaving the room towards the, towards the kitchen, and I dressed Mr. Hancock," and says, "You're a liar." Ms. Skilman, in her declaration, accused me of hovering over Mr. Hancock in the middle of the room and yelling at him. She is not trustworthy, and she lied in that declaration. She's not worthy to be mayor. She never puts anything on the agenda, never has any ideas, nothing, never has hardly anything to report. She's the weakest link on this council, and I know you all work pretty darn hard, and I would suggest in the reorganization that Susan Harvey be appointed or suggested to serve as mayor, because Ms. Skilman has, has been a total disappointment, especially me asking at the last, uh, last month's meeting for a copy of that purchase order for that police vehicle, the police vehicle, singular in the report. I would really appreciate you take that into consideration.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on this topic? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, after that vote of confidence, I would be very happy to nominate Vice Mayor Skilman to be mayor next year.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on this? Nope, all right, seeing none? Um, making sure that we're doing this the right way from, yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, please show a 5-0, congratulations to you. Vice Mayor, soon-to-be mayor, Skilman.
Careful what you wish for.
Right, so, all right, we are now at item E.
Vice Mayor, yep.
Do we really have to have one?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Yes.
All right.
You're thinking vestigial appendage.
Am I just like breezing through this a little too quickly? Sorry. Okay, so, do we have a nomination from the council for a vice mayor?
I would, uh, like to nominate, um, Councilmember Moore.
And I'd be happy to second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on next year's vice mayor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain? It's now official, congratulations, council member, soon-to-be vice mayor, Moore.
Thank you.
Can we now go to the next agenda item? Thank you, all right. We are at item, another fun topic, item E, uh, the council assignments as representatives and liaisons to various committees for calendar year 2020, and I'll turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council, so attached to the staff report is the current list of, uh, members and alternates to regional, um, committees and boards, and, um, also some, uh, citizen, um, some positions held by Catati citizens that were appointed, um, by the council or board of supervisors, and, um, the one, I think the one change that occurred this year, as is indicated in the staff report, is that, um, Councilmember Harvey was confirmed as the second vice president of the North Bay League of Cities, so, um, as I understand, that puts you automatically on the board, so, that's, yes. And aside from that, there's the summary table assigned, um, or attached to the, to the staff report on page 137, and then there's, um, more detailed descriptions of each of the committee positions following that, and, um, uh, that's pretty much it, unless you have any questions or comments that you want to ask me.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? Again, probably not, it's pretty obvious. Um, and before we go to any kind of public comment on this, um, I think the easiest thing when we have a discussion is if there's anybody who's looking for a change in either rotating off of a committee or wanting to get onto one, and, um, in the, uh, more descriptive narrative, which is page five of six, or the packet page 142, um, it does show the second item, uh, under County Ag and Open Space, it shows that my term expires in 2017, that was renewed in 2019, and it was renewed until, I think it's a two-year term, so it should be through June of 2021, so if we could just make an editorial to that. that, next time you print it out, that would be wise.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, while you're on that, it would be perfect time. Right below that for staff two on LAFCO, my current term as a alternate city representative actually expires in 2023 now, because we went through that earlier this year.
Same month, May?
I believe so, yes.
All right, very good. Those were just factual corrections we needed to make. Let me go ahead and open this up for public comment. If anyone has any comments. Seeing none, I will close public comment. So, in general, is there anybody who's looking, let's start with, you know, to get off of a committee that they're currently serving on? And some of you are stuck there forever, I just want to say.
Right, it's a long time.
It is a really long time, and you can't pawn it off on any of us that don't want it. Having said that...
I have some flexibility. There's a few, if somebody was hankering to do more, I'd be happy perhaps to share. There's a few I'd prefer your support to stay on, but I'll leave that as somebody's looking for more to do. If not, I can continue to do them. I'm certainly not looking for any more myself at this point.
Well, that's unfortunate, because I had a few suggestions.
This is why I beat you to the draw.
Right, right. Okay. No, I mean, that, that's, that's fair enough, so.
I believe you have, Mr. Mayor, a lot more free time these days than you could.
I don't know why people keep using that phrase.
That's right.
I really don't know what that means.
Hmm. I believe his cup said, he's not.
Right. Thank you. You saw that.
I did see that.
That's right.
I would just offer that I think that it's a commendable job that you are doing on the various committees, all of the electeds, and unless there's, you know, dire need to change, we would move forward as is.
Well, and I have a question going back, I've had this discussion several times now, on our representation on city commissions, i.e. the planning commission. Obviously, design review does not exist anymore. It's a staff function. And I'm currently the representative and liaison to the planning commission, but I remember when Ms. Donahue was still here asking the question, you know, "I've been kind of shunned by the city attorney's office over the years. You really can't go to those meetings." And it's like, well, why, why do we have these liaison positions if, you know, there's, if I'm sitting in a room listening and somebody thinks I'm influencing the commission up here, which I can't imagine I could or would? So, where do we want to take that before, because I don't know, I don't know what's left. There aren't too many, too many groups left, to my knowledge.
Well, I believe that the, those liaison positions last, I think a year ago, I think it was a year ago that we took those off this list and decided...
They're right, that's their goal.
Yeah, no, based on the, based on attorney advice at that time.
Oh, you know what, then? I must have been reading the older sheet and not the, and the one in the staff report, so. Thank you for listening to me.
Sure.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
Those aren't here.
They are not here. Um, what's he talking about?
But, but John, they are on page five of six in the longer description.
I thought I read it somewhere.
They didn't get it in summary, but they did.
All right.
So, you are.
I am what? Correct?
Correct.
Oh, is that the word you're, you're, okay. And your microphone wasn't on, though. Not everybody heard that. That's okay. Yeah, so then we just needed to...
John, you are correct.
Thank you.
Sorry. I, I have a note here to cross out that row. With, it was a planning commission liaison. That was still in that long, the more detailed table.
Okay.
That I made a note to remove.
Pardon?
I made a note to remove it.
Thank you. That'll make me feel a lot better. And are there any other factual changes? Like, did everybody check the dates of when their current term on whatever group expires? So, Mark had one suggestion. I had the other. I don't know if there's any others for people that apply. And I know that there's a couple of groups that, you know, the two by two by two, we've not met in six years, probably. It feels like it's a couple of administrations ago in the school district. So, I mean, we can keep that. That's fine. I don't know if Runer Park still has, I think it was Gina and Pam.
Yes.
If I recall. So, I guess we can just keep that one on there then for now.
Is the Kattati Runer Park Unified School District currently searching for a new superintendent?
Thought I read something along those lines.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think it's been filled.
So, it might be worthwhile, it might be worthwhile to leave that on there till we, we can check in with them when they get a new superintendent.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fine. It's fine to certainly leave that there. And then, I also wanted to make sure that between Sue and I, on page three of six at the top, Sonoma County Health Action, I think that's correct, because I attend those quarterly meetings, and then you've got those other more local meetings.
And they have not had those.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know that they're having those anymore.
Well, we're still having the quarterly meetings, so I'm still going with those.
You know, as that keeps evolving, Health Action keeps evolving.
That's right.
I think that's part of it, so.
Okay. So, in summary, outside of a couple of editorials of dates, it doesn't sound like there's any real changes. Everybody can continue with what they're doing?
Yeah. So, I think it may be worthwhile, then, on page three of six, that we make you the primary, John, because you're the primary on the summer.
Oh, for Sonoma County Health?
Yeah, on Health Action.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sure. That's going to fill up a lot more of my free time.
Yeah.
But I, I can do that.
Okay.
And so, is that be a swap? You become the alternate?
Yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, unless, of course, Mark, you know, needs something else to do.
I would just remind the mayor, it is a labor of love.
Yes, thank you for that comment. Unfortunately, your microphone was on.
I know.
I hope it wasn't that time. That's the way it goes. Okay. All right. So, that's it, right? No other changes?
No, I'm good with what I have.
Okay. Staff got all the changes we've been talking about?
Yep.
All right. Okay. Very good. Thank you for that. And we will move to item 11, which is the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, just a reminder, we have, as follow-up to the housing workshop, we have the survey posted on our website under headlines. So, just a reminder, if you or any, anyone in the community has opinions about housing and couldn't make the workshop, or even if you did, there's a good opportunity to get your voice heard early in the process. Some police news. So, today at Thomas Page was our annual cocoa and cookies with a cop. Police staff had cookies and chocolate milk with students, even though the chief was trying to get them to eat vegetables. Apparently, they just went after the cookies and the chocolate milk, just like my kids. So, the Kattati Police Department is pleased to continue the holiday tradition with cookies and cocoa with a cop version two, which is they, you know, the police department invites children under the age of 12 to the police station for an evening filled with crafts, treats, and toy, a story read by Santa himself. It's a, a cop Christmas. Yeah, right. It's a cop Christmas. So, it's a new spin on it. And it's read by Santa himself. And so, we're limiting to the first 36 children for the event on Friday, December 13th at 7:00 p.m. Please reserve your spot by emailing rluke@kattatacy.org. This is a free event. Each child must be accompanied by an adult. So, it's a, it's a fun thing, and if you want to read Santa with a cop, or Santa cop, I don't know. I haven't read the story myself, but it wasn't on my reading list with my kids. I need to get a copy of that. All right. So, this past Friday, as was talked about earlier, we celebrated our annual holiday tree lighting in La Plaza Park. Despite the rainy weather, families still showed up to see the lighting of the tree and visit with Santa. There were a few hundred guests throughout the night, and everyone was in great spirits. As was mentioned, we also had two different news stations broadcasting during the event, which was kind of a new thing for us. And they did, they did their weather report from the park, showing that even in rain, Kattati still celebrates the holiday season. And then, this coming Saturday, we're hosting our fourth annual breakfast with Santa event in Kattati Room. So, Santa's getting around a lot right now. And the event, I know in the announcements earlier, it said, "Reserve your space now," but actually, I'm sad to announce, if you haven't already done that, the event's sold out. There's already a waiting list for it, so it's, it's too late if you haven't bought your tickets. But I'll, but it is coming up, and we're excited to see our guests, who will, who have, who will have help during the event from the Rancho Kattati High School Recreation II class, who we've been working with there at the tree lighting as well. So, they've been helping with various things. They help with City Halloween. And then, during the school winter break, we're hosting our camp, Kattati Winter Break Camp. We have just a few spaces left for each week, so sign up early to secure your space. And like always, if you have information on city, if you want information on city programs or events, please contact Ashley Wilson, 665-4222, or awilson@kattatacy.org, or of course, you can always go to our website, Facebook page, Instagram, and activity guide and everything else that we put out there. So, that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager on anything that was reported out? Nope? All right. We will move on to item 12, city council member reports. And let me go to my left, and we'll start with Councilmember Landman.
This always happens when I look away from you. All right, let's see. Excuse me. I have a couple to catch up on here. First of all, an update on the Regional Climate Protection Authority. As I know staff's been aware, I'm not sure if we've talked about this briefly at council. There's been some discussion this last year of how to try and help RCPA grow into something that's much more effective in actually helping the communities in this region meet their greenhouse gas emissions goals and get that work done. As it currently stands, it's a valuable organization, but it's essentially funded by finding grants. So, this means they look around every year or two, trying to find some project related, good, good projects related greenhouse gas emission reductions. And so, with that, there's never a plan. They're not really able to help us to the degree that they could. And so, the goal is to find some way of funding this to a larger degree, to actually turn it into some sort of thing that acts as, if you will, surrogate staff for the various member agencies. Basically, most of the cities, with a few exceptions in this region, can't afford their own sustainability officers, if you will. And obviously, there'd be some value in that. There's a necessity really for that, but it's something that just isn't happening. And this is a thought, kind of mimicking what's done right now with the Rush River Water Set Association, to do it by pooling resources. Generally speaking, you can do it a little cheaper, and there's some value in that. So, that's the goal. We're having discussions about how to do that, what that cost would look like, how to equitably share and bear it, because it would probably be a big enough increase. It might not be something that the cities could carry on their shoulders on an ongoing basis. It probably looks for some outsourced, outside sort of funding, which has yet to be decided or determined what to go for. But it's probably some sort of measure in 2022, I would suspect. So, that's going forward. We're fine tuning those discussions. I think after the next iteration, we'll probably start going out, talking to staff at various places, then to get their input, and see how this works, and then come back to SCTAs. So, just kind of a heads up for that. I think it's a long path to get there, but I think there's potentially some good results. I know some of the potential deliverables are ones that I was able to have our staff take a look at, and we agreed, depending on how it was structured and what costs were, there's definite value for Kattatians. The question is all the details, as always. So, and then there's the small matter, I would have mentioned this last time, but I wasn't here. You might have noticed in the press, Sonoma Clean Powers Board of Directors has decided to make a, a commitment to looking into some form of public ownership of infrastructure in the regions we serve, which is this county and Mendocino County, and supporting that on more of a statewide basis, too. Basically, without making this an agenda item piece and going to all the reasons for it, as we've come to that conclusion, if you keep repeating the same thick problems over and over, and keep having the same bad results, that that's, as we all know, is a definition of insanity. And that is something we'd like to see avoided for the people of this state and this region. I want to be clear to everybody who might be watching this or listening, some people have thought this means that Sonoma Clean Powers is getting their checkbook out, and they're going to be wandering over to bankruptcy court and saying, "Ooh, ooh, ooh." That's not happening. The size of PG&E and the amount of deferred maintenance, this is the crucial problem, the huge deferred maintenance. It's not just the trees. It's, it's worse than, you know, makes this very challenging. So, it probably looks like it's a big thing that has to be a group structure throughout the state. And that could look at a lot of ways. We've seen municipalization be very successful, and we've also seen co-ops work well. And indeed, one thing that is rising to the top right now, potentially, down the road, could be a co-op that Mr. Merrill Licar is pushing. So, just wanted to share that with everybody, because it is kind of a water, small watershed, at least for this county.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
I had the pleasure of co-hosting the tree lighting event on December 6th in your stead. So, I'm sorry that you weren't there, but it was, it was a lot of fun to, to participate in that, and it was an amazing turnout. I was really surprised, because when I saw the forecast, I thought, "Oh, we're going to have six people. This is going to be really difficult." But, no, and I think a lot of it, too, was kids just put on their galoshes and they're ready to go. And so, their parents were very tolerant and very supportive of going out there with their kids. And a lot of people lined up to talk to Santa, and one person even dressed up their dog as an elf to pose with Santa. So, it was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of singing, and it was just a lot of fun to watch the kids enjoy the evening. So, that's what I have to report out.
And thank you again for stepping in for me. Appreciate that. Councilmember Moore?
I do not have anything to report out at this time, other than the chamber had their holiday cheer event on Thursday, and I wasn't certain how the shop and stroll event went.
Soaked, is what I heard.
I had a feeling it was, so.
Swim and stroll.
It, it, they, they had it, but it was largely rained out by noon. So, I think most of the vendors had left at that point.
That's what I figured. It stopped early, so, yeah, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I also attended the tree lighting. I thought it was very nice. People, there, I've never seen so many umbrellas looking out off the stage, so people were, were definitely prepared. And I noticed that, you know, where all the craft tents and things were, there were a lot of people in those. I think people, you know, really just made the best of it. Like, would like to thank our vendors who kind of hung in there with us. That was, one of my fears was that, since it was raining, that they might show it, should, not, might not show up, but they did. And I would especially like to thank our staff. I know they went to an extra effort of trying to make the area in front of the stage not so soggy, and I think that that worked out, that worked out nicely. And I know that the staff put in a lot of work to make that happen, even in the rain. Most of my meetings are this week and next, but there's a couple of things that I kind of want to highlight, because people may hear a little bit about it. On the Waste Management Agency for the composting, we have been moving slowly with Renewable Sonoma to get composting, and that's who we and Santa Rosa have been working with since they're looking at the Laguna. But kind of, I don't, I won't say out of left field, but all along, there's been another group called Stage Gulch Organics that has been, you know, trying to put together a composting facility. And the site that they were looking at was down in Petaluma, there on Adobe. It was referred to as Site 40, probably eight years ago, when it wasn't looked at. But people may hear about that, because they are progressing on their own on that, so people may hear that. So, ultimately, who knows what's going to happen? I don't know what, certainly what's going to happen, but we may ultimately end up with two facilities. So, but just in case you hear that, yes, we are continuing what we're doing with Renewable Sonoma, but the Stage Gulch Organics, they're kind of moving on a path, too. So, that's an interesting thing. And then, secondly, tomorrow at the Friedman Community Center in Santa Rosa, from 4:30 to 7:00, there will be a groundwater workshop, and they have, the Groundwater Recharge Workshop, and they have quite a panel of people discussing various subjects. So, I'm planning on going to that, but that is a public event. It's a workshop, and I wanted people to know that. And the address of the Friedman Center is 4676 Mayette Avenue in Santa Rosa. And again, that's tomorrow evening from 4:30 to 7:00. So, a lot of information on groundwater will happen there. And I guess my reports on the rest of my committees will have to wait till next year.
Oh, there you go. Oh, there you go. Thank you for that. And all I have, from the best of my recollection, is this coming Thursday is an Ag and Open Space meeting, where we're going to focus on the Vital Lands Initiative, which is kind of this 30-year visionary document. And then on Monday, the 16th, I'm going to be making a portion of the presentation to the board of supervisors about this Vital Lands Initiative, so we will see where that will go. All right, with that, we're now at item 13, public comment on non-action agenda items. Mr. Beric.
Counsel, I have three items for possible consideration for future agendas. The first one, so I want you to take note tonight of our audio system. There's an excessive amount of feedback and echo on the system tonight for a variety of reasons. It's very annoying, it's horrendous, it's frustrating, and it's a, it's a result of some technical issues that I don't want to bring to your attention right now. A lot of it has to do with a lot of microphones that are open at the same time and so forth. There are technical solutions for this. In the spirit of the season, I'd like to offer my services to the city manager to meet with him and explain how this all works, how it can be improved for everybody's benefit. I want these meetings to run very smoothly, so, and I've talked to Neville Hormus about this as well, we're at your disposal to meet with the city manager and come up with some possible solutions for you. That's item one. Item two is that your safety, my, my safety in this, in these proceedings is of my utmost concern. And I always feel a little uneasy on a night like this when we're here and somebody strange walks in the back of the room that I don't recognize and sits in the back of the room, and my police chief's sitting in the front of the room. Normally, when I go to other city council meetings, the police chief is not sitting in the front of the room, he's roaming, or he's sitting in the back, and he's sizing up the situation, so that he can, he or she can positively identify anybody if, if, God forbid, anything happens. And I don't want anything to happen, and I'd like us to review this as well, because some people can come in here, and these are very uncertain times, with opioid crises and people's depression this time of year and so forth. It's a very uneasy feeling to have people come in the room that I've never seen before and sit in the dark of the back, okay? Please take them into consideration as we look at agendas for next year. And I'd be happy to speak with the police chief about it as well. Last but not least, my heart is with the homeless in Kattati again this season. Season of joy, season of giving, season of caring for our fellow man. We've been trying to address the issue of homelessness in Kattati and what this city body can do about it for years now. We're all going to go home to our comfortable homes, cozy, wonderful families, wonderful blessings of food and, and joy and children and so forth, but there are people out there that are going to be in the coldest of our temperatures here in the next month or two. We don't have a warming station, we don't have any food programs, we don't have any porta-potties in a few locations that would be very inexpensive to put out there for people who have to come to town or have to relieve themselves and so forth, may feel uneasy about going into the police station because of their condition. And I want you to think about, I want your heart to be with the homeless again this year. We have Sonoma State students living in their cars and so forth, and we are all very fortunate, we're all blessed. And I know in your hearts, you have concerns for the homeless. And I want to make it a point for next year that we actually do something about this, we put our heads together and find out what a minimal we can do, maybe to stop somebody from freezing out in the cold and going through a personal crisis to, to the extent that we really don't ever, can't even imagine. Thank you, and I wish you all a very happy holiday season.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Just as one last reminder too, this is going to be now the sixth annual, it's not really a food drive like we're collecting cans and barrels, these are nutritious meals put together in large boxes that go to 100 to 125 families throughout, not just even Sonoma County, sometimes they reach beyond. So this is the sixth year that I've brought this program to the city, and you're more than welcome to come down on the 21st, which is a Saturday. Thank you for your comments. All right, item 14, any information received after the agenda was posted? We have none. Then we are officially adjourned at 8:33. I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, because it's right around the corner.